No, it looks like you guys are muted. Yeah, now I can hear you.
Okay.
Mr. Lowell, you're up. We hear that we have a receipt of the proposal. Feel free to take it away.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Yes, we received a proposal as expected from FAM. It came in on the 22nd. The team has been reviewing that. And we did have some follow-up questions and comments which we shared with the FAM team. We've received responses from part of that and we expect to receive more from their team either by end of today or tomorrow. And we do have a follow-up call with them tomorrow to go over some questions that we have as well as some questions they have. So we're continuing to review the materials. Under Florida statutes, what they submitted is confidential, protected from sunshine. So as of right now, all that is confidential material. It would not be publicly available and is protected by the law. So we're also looking at it from the perspective of the Federal Aviation Administration requirements and the Florida DOT requirements because they will have to concur should this move forward. So we're looking to make sure that their requirements would be met as well as any Florida statutes and city requirements. So we expect to have a follow-up for you at your next meeting. And we should have a lot more information for you at that point in time. But of course, we'll need to be careful and this is really up to your attorney to advise you on, you know, kind of how this could be discussed with the council so that it protects the confidentiality of the proposal.
Jerry, is this something that the council would not be able to view at this point? Simply, or it is public?
It might be premature right now. It wouldn't advance anything at this moment. But perhaps for the next meeting, you know, we should at least bring you up to date with a closed meeting, a closed meeting. And so we can schedule that at that time. But you told me you have a complete proposal and we'll need to move in that direction.
Do we have any sort of deadline at this point or any kind of ETA?
Not necessarily a deadline. There's not anything required in the statute. It's really up to the council and your city staff to do that. Normally, you know, you would review this for compliance with Florida statutes, any other requirements, which as I mentioned, we would look at the FAA and the FDOT requirements in that. And once that's done, it's really up to the council to decide if you want to move forward. And if so, it would be up to you to set an advertisement period at that point.
Do you have any idea of when we can expect to have this come before us for a vote?
I would say it's tough to say at this point. I'm sure we will have a lot more for you at your next meeting. We probably will know a good bit more after we talk to FAM tomorrow and, you know, go through the questions from their side and our side. Because in their proposal, they had asked some questions of the city. And we've answered a number of those, but there's still a couple that the city team is pulling together that's some financial information. So it's kind of questions on both sides that are being put together at this point.
I have one comment if I may. I would like to ask if you could try to proceed as quick as possible with due diligence because not only do we have to worry about getting an advertisement out after we look at this application to see if there's any other people interested, but we also have several people on hold who are applying for just the field-based operator position. And so we've been dealing with this now for four months. And so all I ask is that we get to as quickly as possible so that we can make adjustments to get it advertised and then make a decision after that, after we get a written contract with the attorney.
Yes, sir. That is certainly our intent.
Thank you.
I have a question in regard, was it a 90-day period of advertisement that you had talked about, Jerry? That statutorily was required once we get to paperwork in? Would it be feasible to do a letter of intent request versus the actual 90 days? That way you could see whether or not there are other interested parties?
I would defer to the judgment of our experts in that area.
You know, could you do a letter of intent for let's just say 30 days? And if there's nothing but one received, then you don't have to go through the 90 day?
Under the Florida statutes, it's as short as 21 days, as long as 120 days. So it's up to you to set the time period.
Yeah, I would drop it as well.
I'd drop the 21. It was up to me. Because there's plenty of people out there that have the opportunity to invest. They would come first by now.
What was that, Brendan?
I said that's what I represented at the beginning of the 21 days.
And I agree with it too.
Okay, and I still.
Me too. Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion? Not very much. That would kick in once we have whatever we have from then, these next corresponding. So.
So Lowell, if it turns out that we have, or the thing we need to go ahead and advertise by, you know, the middle of this week or next week or something, can we just go ahead and advertise, take it out to give us the dates that they'd like to use? Or is that something we have to wait until we get the?
It's kind of up to the council. If you want to advertise, you can. What we're determining is if the submitted meets the statutes. And we're not quite there yet. So that's what we're going to finish up hopefully in the next week. So, but when you want to advertise, it's really a policy call.
Our next meeting is the 26th. So, I mean, unless there's a special meeting, I don't think we need a special.
Wouldn't it be helpful for President to vote on a period of time if he'd like to have another run? And give us opportunities to advertise if you deem the application to be ready to advertise?
But I have a question in regard to the advertisement itself. What are the contents of that advertisement?
It's in the statute. A lot of this based off of the unsolicited.
So it would be advertising based off of what's been provided to us thus far? And we can tweak it where we want to.
What do you think, Lowell? Is that something we should do?
I've seen advertisements as simple as we received an unsolicited proposal about XYZ. And we're open to other proposals. And please submit by X time period to some that have done a complete request for proposal that added more requirements from the city or whichever local government was including the advertisement. So it just depends on kind of what the policy direction of the council is.
I think we're all in favor of the 21 days. I would just simply suggest that we have our consultant there come up with a good advertisement for us at our next meeting that we can vote to agree on. And then we can start at 21 days from that point.
Is the implication that the advertisement is heavily detailed or is it kind of nebulous? I mean, how, the reason why I ask is, is it a mini-contract in itself? When you look at it, is there any wiggle room in it once it's advertised? Or after it's advertised?
It depends on, I would say you have, you have basic requirements that you would want to include. You know, such as, are you going to allow protest or not? Or are you going to allow, you know, just like you would do in normal procurement, some of what I would call your basic procurement formats? You might want to include. Beyond that, it really comes down to a policy decision as to how much detail. So now I would include in this one, you know, you got to meet FAA requirements. You got to meet FDOT requirements associated with grants because you have those requirements on you as a city. So you have to ensure those are met. But how detailed you are on that is really up to you. We can be pretty simplistic on that or we can be more detailed. But again, those are grant requirements that you as a city are obligated to meet. So you would want to pass that on to whoever proposed.
So is this a timeframe between now and our next meeting? When we have an actual RFP in front of us or RFQ? Is it a time for us to be able to post questions to you and communicate with you in the time being so that we can see whether or not some things can be added or taken out or whatever?
Yes, ma'am. That would be excellent.
All right. So are we basically pushing our consultant to come up with a suggestion for us? And we can, in the meantime, provide comment to him?
That's what I'd like to do. I know that Jim had a lot of confidence from the last meeting that we had.
I've also shared some with Jerry to share with him.
We would encourage our attorney to not be shy and reach out to Mr. Lowell as well.
We're talking routinely.
And so are the other attorneys that we hired, are they also involved in this process right now? Or?
Yeah, we just didn't ask them if you're a knight. There's a policy issue that we can think that we have a lot of issues that they would be impressed. But they're trusting me. I have A issues and things that we have to get to more satisfied at that age. And they have a lot of input regarding the contract.
Do you have members of FAM here tonight? Is there any questions they have, anything they'd like to say in this update?
Just, you know, just recall that it's confidential. So if you're going to just keep it confidential, you need to be confidential.
Name and address of the group.
JT Clark, 415 Spine Street, 101 in the Florida, 32801. Thank you, counsel. We made a very thorough submission to the city. We would like some specific feedbacks and metrics of what Mr. Mile believes that we have fallen short on so that we can identify those quickly and get them returned to you ASAP. I believe there's some, the statute doesn't actually dictate what the threshold is. The city takes what that threshold is. And then as far as the legal advertisement, it's, we provided one. It's been about four weeks ago, just saying that there was an unsolicited application for Florida Statute 255.065. It's made it on this date. What is the legal window? And I think that, where are the opinion that legal advertisement could begin? Because the feedback even on the, from the request for more information is greater detail, not what our overall objective is. I don't know if that makes sense or not. It doesn't change what our path or course is and what we're trying to achieve here at the Avon Park Airport. It's just possible avenues to get there. And some of those will be unknown and will happen at various capital improvement project times.
Mr. Clary, do you have a comment to that?
I'm sorry, is there a particular point or?
I believe the question was, there's specifics that you've requested from FAM. And I think they're asking you to be specific about your specifics, I think is what I've gathered.
And we have a call tomorrow to go over that.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Clary. JT said that the legal advertisement that they submitted a couple, four, five weeks ago, could that be used as our advertisement? Can you look at that one and see?
It's really up to you. That's a little less than that I've seen in other situations.
We actually pulled that one directly from the Florida Register as an example of other P3 arrangements in the state of Florida.
And it could be used as a good template because I really don't want to forfeit my ability to be able to have them put in if I have any. And I mean, the rest of us, that's what we just discussed, is that I'd like to be able to communicate with Mr. Leary. Oh, Leary.
Clary.
Clary, sorry. Should we need to in the meantime? And I mean, he can advise and stuff. I used to do RFPs and RFQs and we never accepted them directly from the person that was going to be doing the work because it's one-sided. Even though I know you're saying that it's statute-driven, but I think that we need to be able to tweak it to our benefit. It's our airport. So, you know, I think we should have that fairness on our side as well.
Absolutely. I want all y'all's input, you know.
Yeah, but advertising it though, then it's a specific language right now and we won't be able to change that. So if we are able to communicate with him and give our input, whether we have any or not, I'd like to give him a deadline. So, you know, if we're going to have our next meeting on the 26th.
Our next meeting, I think, should be the deadline. We voted on it that night.
On that night, okay. Well, but then if he has any other questions and stuff and we're going to have to delay it again. So if we get everything that we want, let's say by the 23rd, I don't know if that's enough time for him to go ahead and review it and then get back with us with the final product for the 26th. Because otherwise, we won't have it ready by 26.
I mean, well, basically at this point, we have, FAM is basically saying they have enough for it to be advertised already regardless of the questions. And I tend to agree with that. So if it's questionable if we have enough information or not already, I don't see a problem with putting a hard date at our next meeting. By then, we're going to agree on what we're going to advertise, period.
As long as we have input on that advertisement.
We will. Even if we don't contact them in the meantime, we're still going to have that open meeting that we all have.
But I mean, will we have it in our hot little hands at 26?
We sure as heck better.
Yes, yes, sir. We will.
So that's kind of where we're going. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Clary, do you have anything else for us on this?
No, sir. We understand your direction and we will work very, very hard to get there.
Lowell, we thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir.
Anything else from council on this?
I just agree with you to go quickly because it's also a bit.
I agree. All right. Moving on to item number seven. Discussion of M zoning district, CFRP C. We have Jeff here with us.
Can you all hear me?
We can.
First time back in a while. It's good to see everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jeff Strucker would be some of the Florida regional planning council. We do have a small presentation that I would like to give you. I think we'll bring that up on the screen.
Which one?
This will be the second one at the bottom. Oh, sorry. I guess it's the first one.
Hold on.
It was a 50/50 shot.
Definitely not this one?
That'll be the next one. Okay, so as that's coming up, I hope we're going to provide for you all tonight is what you're looking for and we're going to go through. And what we're hoping for tonight is to just go through kind of a brief presentation and solicit some input from you all, get some direction, get some additional guidance in moving forward on this particular item. Okay, great. So just a real brief background. Several months ago, we got some direction from city staff to look at opportunities to start providing or encouraging opportunities to provide additional business throughout the city. Talking about these industrial districts, talking about manufacturing, talking about manufacturing the products, how we can open that door in other parts of the city. And I guess the discussion was, is looking at potentially a new M or manufacturing zoning district. Staff's thought on this, in lieu of providing a new zoning district, was to go in a direction to potentially look at a possible new use category in the city's land development code. The purpose of that really in tune with saving time and providing a more efficient opportunity for these types of businesses to come in. In lieu of rezoning all the properties to allow for these potential uses, which may involve also future land use amendments, public hearings, you know, a longer period of time to potentially allow these new uses under new zoning districts. The thought was, let's create potentially a new use site that might open the door for these types of uses in your current zoning districts. So, next slide. And what we've come up with is what we're calling craft and artisan productions. And what these types of businesses essentially have or typically consist of are the items that you see up on the screen. And these are things that have characteristics that are obvious, have obvious place of origin of production, or created using unique materials or based on a distinctive concept or a recipe. And a lot of times, they use natural ingredients. We talked about things like organics these days, this tend to be pretty popular. But these are types of items that are produced at a high quality but in small or smaller quantities. Most of the time, these are done by independent companies and not your large conglomerates or your rather large corporations. But typically, they involve human involvement in the process. And then they're sold and distributed at a smaller scale generally through a specific local location. And so some examples of these might be furniture making and upholstery, instrument or jewelry crafting, custom cabinetry or woodwork. And when you establish some of these things at certain locations, you can contribute to the community and create, you know, essentially districts. And this may be a very helpful way to help spawn economic development in the downtown, on Main, excuse me, Main Street corridor. And in this example, we're just showing the Knoxville, the artisan shopping district. Next slide. They also include places like specialty food production and preparation, coffee roasting shops, confectioner shops, artists, studios and classes. Next slide. But the biggest that we've seen around the state and regionally would be things like your craft beverage industry, for instance. Microbreweries, micro distilleries, micro wineries. These types of businesses you can potentially find in your downtown in another lower-impact zoning districts throughout the city. Next slide. But you can also find them in some of your more intensive zoning districts as well, depending on the size of the operation. So in the image that I pointed out in the bottom left here, what that is, is a larger craft operation, which would generally be found in industrial or maybe a business park center zoning district. But what it also provides that the code doesn't currently provide is then the opportunity to have a tasting room or have what they call a consumption component or a retail component as part of the manufacturing. Right now, in the city zoning code, it's like manufacturing is all in industry. Your retail and your other industries are all in your commercial and business zoning districts. There's really not a meld of the two of those. And over the last several, excuse me, last several years, this has been a hot topic throughout the state of Florida. How do we bring those together? The artisan, you know, and craft of production type of use might be the opportunity to open the door to start encouraging additional businesses in these different zoning districts throughout the city where you might otherwise say, well, you have to go into your industrial district or you have to go into the business commercial area. So next slide. We can stop here. I provided in your packet just a very example draft language that we had pulled from some of the communities. And we wanted to provide that just so you all had something to take a look at. You know, as we're talking about this, kind of at the 30,000th level right now. But to give you an idea of what that language might look like, how it might fit in the code. So I don't know if we want to go into that yet. I guess maybe, I'm probably going to say, am I completely off-base here? The discussions I've had with city staff, I know it was a direction of council and it was related down to us. Let's take a look at this. Let's create maybe this M manufacturing zoning district. We've had several conversations. And it was our thought that maybe it's not about creating a new zoning district. It's about looking at the uses and how we can control those uses and then open that up to different areas of the city to encourage business in these different zoning districts. But by not creating a new zoning district and then having to establish uses within that zoning district. And then over time, as those businesses want to come in, having to rezone property, essentially assign future land use to property, go through a longer lengthy process to acquire or encourage the businesses to come in, use what you have right now, but adjust it from a use standpoint. So that's kind of the direction we took on this. And so that's, I've got a little bit more we can go through, but I just want to kind of get the feel from you all. Are we on the right page here? Are we on the right, are we going in the right direction here?
I think we're going on the right track. When I brought this up, and I know that Garrett, someone had spoken to you about potential businesses in downtown under the M title, knowing that Main Street does not require parking if you own a business, whereas I1 and I2 do. C1, I'm not sure if it requires parking or not. So that was one of the big components on having small-scale manufacturing in the C4 district. That was the original designated area that we discussed from the original conversation we had with council was because parking was an issue. So, one that would not require parking. So, I mean, you could do an overlay C1, I'm sorry, I1 and I2 automatically. Yeah, you can manufacture anything you want in there, but you have to have a schematic for your parking and all of that, right? So this would be something that if it were in the C4 district, for example, you know, can it be done? And what the expected, if you're saying it would be under a conditional use, I would prefer that it was just cut and dry so that the city staff can just go ahead and approve it. I don't think every single little thing needs to come to us.
Agreed.
You know, because I mean, that becomes, then we're doing all the heavy lifting. No, we don't like you. I mean, let them do all the heavy lifting. That's what they're paid to do. So if it were more of a, an overlay of C4 perhaps to where, you know, there might be someone manufacturing masks, do they really need a front office or do they just need a back door?
Well, I thought in great detail about this and you can, I mean, there's millions of different things that you can make, right? Eating computers to read, musical instruments. But I think the one thing, if we're specifically talking about C4, which we originally were, with C4 in particular in the downtown, the biggest thing is you just wouldn't want manufacturing or storage taking place outside.
No.
So long as it's indoors completely, you're not making noxious fumes. You're not making a lot of smoke. You're not making a lot of noise. Anything that would deter pedestrians from being in and around your facility.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's tied to some type of a retail component. So, they're not simply making things that it's all exported and that no one is coming in and out. I think a retail component would be very important to keep with the C four district. That may not apply to the C two or the I one, I two, but for the C four, that's probably the direction.
But that, yeah, but that depends also on the business model of the individual wanting to relocate here. We have a lot of empty buildings or small enough for the uses that these individuals are looking for. The amenity is again, the lack of parking, the, you know, if someone's already paying for the impact fees for these buildings in terms of water consumption and stuff. So, there's a ripe market for this type of business. I think that the craft beer, I think it's great. I think Steven's getting ready to open one.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I heard that we were going to get one here on Main Street at one point as well, but maybe they changed their mind.
Well, you've got interest still in that.
Yeah, so, I mean, if this is required language in our code to include craft service type productions and artisan productions, then yeah, let's pour it in there. But it's like Garrett says, and I think you kind of get the idea, it's to be able to fill in these empty buildings where you don't need to have parking, where fees are already paid for by somebody else. We already know they can move to C two and do everything all they want. They don't need a storefront there, do they? They can just have a warehouse if they wanted to and an I one and I two.
Distribution.
Yeah, this would just open it up more. I mean, if we had, who knows? I mean, there's just all kinds of things out there. But one of the ones that I have been spoken to about is masks and needles, production of needles. Needle, needles, hyper, you know, turmeric.
I would not limit it to traditional methods either, because one of the big things that's happening right now is robotics, a lot of electronics, a lot of custom electronics that do custom things, PCs, various things of that nature. So, I would say, let's encourage future growth and future technologies as well. You know, from a practical standpoint of having a business, if I want to start making something, and maybe I'm in my garage right now, I want to expand that. I don't necessarily want to go build a ten thousand square foot building. I want to go rent something that's the size of an apartment, maybe a thousand, two thousand square feet, maybe have one or two people that work for me, grow it, and then if it takes off and it gets bigger, then you move out and you build your big facility. So, I think it would be a really great incubator for new technologies that come along as well as the artisan. If we want to have a person that wants to make shoes, well, God bless them, make your shoes on Main Street, you know? So, that's just my opinion. And along with what Maria was saying of not having everything be conditional. The biggest problem that we've had, or one of the big problems that we've had in this town, is sometimes people get treated differently. Sometimes people are encouraged or discouraged based on who they are, or sometimes people just don't like dealing with city bureaucracy. Having things that fit into our zoning that are permitted is far cleaner. You just have a staff member, staff members come and go, there's a lot of more anonymity to it. It's a lot easier for business, a lot less intimidating for businesses to come. And that's what we want to do, is we want to be encourager of businesses coming to Avon Park, not a discourager or a blocker. We want to look for reasons to say yes, not looking for reasons to say no.
And the rules will remain the same regardless who, what staff members there.
Correct.
Which is good. I agree with you.
Yes, I agree with you too.
Move forward.
So, I think, well, we, if I'm here correctly then, I think we, what we'll still do is we'll still provide development standards for you all, both not go through the conditional use process, make it straight permitted, but we'll still provide development standards in the city's code. So, we've got some guidance as to how these things can, you know, develop in these different districts, you know, the city's. Quick question on the parking though. So, is it the council's desire that there would be more parking or to follow the existing exemption of parking? Or is it that you would require or want to require as the business is coming into establish additional parking?
That's the tricky part, because, you know, with C four not being a requirement for parking, you know, are we going to demand that people have parking? And if it's just going to be a small manufacturing, I mean, I don't know how many cars are talking about, but I would love to see cars parked on Main Street and have a parking problem.
Right.
You know?
We've gone through great lengths to expand our parking in downtown.
Yeah.
And I think the best thing that could ever happen to us is that we did have a parking problem we didn't.
And so, the question in regards to C two then, because that one does require parking. What if a business of this level wanted to go into the C two area, there you have to have a parking schematic? Can we dumb that one down so that it is more flexible for this type of business to come in? If that's the case, then pretty much everything on C two is, it would fit here, wouldn't it? We would have to change, I mean, that's just a tricky question. How do you, how do you make it less burdensome?
The one thing that you're going to get in C two is you're going to get high intensity retail, meaning like Starbucks or McDonald's or Dollar General. You've got, you know, you've got thirty people inside the store at any given time, they're coming and going rapidly. It may not necessarily be the best idea to dumb down the parking on the C two just because that's the type of businesses that are going to be there. So, with the manufacturing, you know, let's say you might have five people that work there all day. You know, they're not coming and going more than once or twice a day. They're going to hardware store, things like that, you know, but if you have a Dollar General or if we have a Starbucks downtown, I mean, that's pretty serious traffic. So, like Harlem National Bank is probably a good example of a business that's high intensity. They're on Main Street, they do have pretty substantial parking, they also have a drive-through, which is something that's unique for Main Street, because I believe we don't actually allow that up to parents. So, you know, those are probably some more complicated things to think about, because I do want to see a Starbucks.
I guess we cross that bridge when we get there, if we have a demand for a C two. Because I mean, there is some relatively inexpensive rent on the C two area in some years that just won't get filled up.
And a lot of blunt property.
Right, and empty lots that don't want to get developed because of the parking requirement. So, you know, if we could start out, I guess, with a, with a manufacturing or whatever you want to call it, what is it, craft artisan production? Throw in a couple of other words in there so that when someone looks at this LDR, they can say to themselves, oh, it also includes other light manufacturing, you know, that needs to be put in there somewhere in the C four, I one, C one.
Yeah, perhaps instead of using the word production, we use words artisan manufacturing, that'll probably accomplish what you're trying to do.
So, Jeff, it already is allowed in the I one and the I two and the C two. So, where is our C three?
You know, we don't have any zoning C three in the city code. It's a category, but.
It just sits there naked. So, this would be for C four and what, C one?
We're proposing it for all the industrial districts.
Okay.
And for your industrial districts, right. So, it's already permitted in industrial. The only thing it adds to that really is having the combination of, I'm usually craft purely initially, but to have a retail element, you know, within your industrial district. If you've got a business that would still want to locate in the industrial district, you still have that opportunity. You know, there's the door for that as well, on that side. General, you know, ten of this is open for these other districts primarily.
So, apparently the C four is the only district that does not require parking, right?
Uh, correct.
So, that right there is going to encourage the smaller people to come downtown, the larger businesses to automatically go to the highway or industrial.
And they'll be able to find that, even though it says C four, they just have to look under C four and see that there is no parking requirement and that the other ones do. So, that will narrow their choices to come down to Main Street.
Absolutely, and in fact, if they're, most developers, they don't want to provide parking. So, if they can find something in the code that says we don't have to provide parking, I'm sure they're going to come that way. Well, if we're looking at this with a staff review and it isn't that straight permitted in the code, we'll look at that during that review process and obviously notice it's in the C four district, then we're not going to, you know.
There any other questions or comments for Jeff?
Nope.
Sounds good. My question is, you got all this put together, is this not another ten years to be looked at or we're about to roll on these things?
No, this is something I'll hope to work on over the next month and we'll come back to, this will come back to the city's planning. Is there any more? And we'll get this back to council.
Shooting for June approval.
I like that idea a lot.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next line. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, something to add? Oh.
I was worried because I don't have my agenda with me.
Sorry about that. All right. Line number eight, first reading ordinance oh seven dash twenty twenty-one, rezoning Brickle Building.
I'll leave that all to Norman Spinning, the official zoning app of the City of Avon Park, Florida. And then one parcel, parcel number eighty twenty-two dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash oh one zero dash oh four two zero dash zero zero four zero, totaling point nine eight acres. Located at two East Main Street from city zone C four, mixed-use commercial district to city PUD, planned unit development by facility provider.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Dana Radel, senior planner for the record. As we discuss, or as the caption was read into the record, you all are aware you are the applicant, the City of Avon Park, town council. The request is to amend the zoning from C four mixed-use district to planned unit development, PUD, at two East Main Street, Avon Park, also known as the Brickle Building. Thank you. The existing future land use is downtown commercial, which allows a, I'm sorry, it allows a density for multifamily residential at sixteen dwelling units per acre. The existing parcel is zero point nine eight acres, which if we round up, allows approximately sixteen dwelling units per acre on the entire parcel as it stands today. In terms of the existing zoning, although the future land use allows sixteen dwelling units per acre, the zoning limits the density to only four dwelling units per acre, which is why council had asked us to prepare a planned unit development that would increase the density to allow, the density will technically be eleven dwelling units per acre, but we just put a blanket statement of ten dwelling units allowed on the parcel. Thank you. So, that would be an increase of six dwelling units from what's currently allowed with the existing zoning to what would be allowed with the proposed zoning. Most times, when you get a planned development or you receive one and, you will receive a master concept plan as well. In this case, the parcel was already developed, so a master concept plan was not necessary. Planning staff did look into this requirement and we determined that as, you know, if the parcel is developed pursuant to the conditions, meaning infill businesses come in and use the existing structures and parking lot, it'll comply with the uses that we're putting in place today. But if a new business wants to come in, destroy the Brickle Building, do something completely new, then we're looking at a major amendment to the PUD and they might have to come back for an amendment. In terms of the existing facilities, we are aware that it's currently served by city water, wastewater and potable water. It's also served by a city-approved refuse collector. There's entrances on three different streets. One entrance for the parking lot is off East Pine. The others are pedestrian entrances to enter the front of the building on Main and on South Lake Avenue. We did check with the public school to make sure that ten dwelling units would be okay and that they would have capacity to serve that number of students, and they agreed that they would. And the city does currently meet our recreation and open space requirements. So, on and off, planning staff really doesn't have any concerns about the proposed PUD. And our options are listed on the screen for a motion. We all are ready.
Do we have any questions?
I do. So, in the LDR, if you are a residential facility and you don't have parking, you can get a letter from another business that has parking that says you can use our parking for your dwellings. If this parking for this building is all consumed based off of the development upstairs, would they still be allowed to farm out any of their parking spaces to anyone else?
Do you know if there's currently an existing agreement for any type of joint use on the parking or anything like that?
But it is in the LDR. We had an issue with this in a lawsuit because of it. So, I don't want to get into the problem of, you know, turning this parking lot into a rental area where developers may not need to develop upstairs because they're not going to need it because they can lease out their parking.
Right, so, I think in the city's code for the C four zoning district, we do still have the requirement in there that.
Hundred and fifty feet, I believe it is, or two hundred?
It might even be four hundred feet to serve the units that they're, they're intended to serve. But if that's the case, I think that there would be a shared use agreement somewhere developed by the property owner who's, I'm assuming they're going to be leasing these units up there, with whoever the property owner would be that's going to serve the parking for that need. Is there an intent to potentially use the parking lot for, for public purposes and camera members?
Yeah, so originally, we discussed that we were going to put enough parking spaces as required by our statute to go with the building. The rest were all going to be designated public use. So, what is it, one point four per unit?
I think for multifamily, it's, that sounds about right.
But if the multi-unit decides, or let's just say someone invests in the building and they don't want to put ten dwellings up there, they only want to put five, that's going to leave them with a surplus of parking, which will enable anyone to use those surplus parking spots for other buildings that don't have dwelling parking. So, you know, is there?
We can't stipulate that in the contract of sale?
But we could, we could, and that's where I'm going, is, you know, how close are we going to tie this to what we want in terms of the development of the building? There are other communities that, for example, you know, at a very low rate of pay or rather purchase price, there's a, you know, we'll give you this property for a dollar if you do this with it. And if we have something like that, which is the eventual goal I thought this council had, then we would be able to control that element. I just want to make sure that that is the case because.
What is the travesty in them leasing?
You end up, you might end up having buses. You might not, people upstairs may not want to live there because there's going to be a different element of parking going on in there in this private use.
Well, because we're going to, you know, we've got, I don't know how many parking spots exactly, four or fifty or so right there. So, you're going to have a large portion of this parking lot is always going to be different people than what live there.
Right, but it's still going to be city-owned, so people won't be able to park on it because it's a city parking, parking lot. It's not private, only a portion of it will be private. So, you know, if we're going to be stipulating the parking there, I'm just wanting to focus on if this is what we're going to do and narrow the parking to fit the dwellings, then, then let's do that. I'm not for giving the entire parking lot for ten dwellings.
Okay, so Jerry, in the terms of sale, whenever we eventually do sell this property, can we stipulate that the parking spaces would have to be used for residents of the building? And they couldn't be leased to other property owners?
We just have to include it in your.
But that contradicts our LDR, because right now, the LDR says that you can.
That's okay. You can also do like HOA, like deep restrictions.
Well, do covered with the land, which is what an HOA is.
Okay. You're confident we can have that hashed out?
Well, I'm certain, but if we want to run that past Bernie Sachs and she's our property law.
So, we have two hearings, so we could get that done between the two hearings?
Sure.
I thought it was just so many parking places per unit, not per, per footage.
It is per unit.
So, if we only, if they only built five units, then they would only get enough parking for the five, not for the ten.
Well.
And that could be drafted with whatever contract we have.
Yeah, that was the point, is to make that part of the conditions of sale.
I thought it was automatic.
If we can condition it, they do ten, we give them twenty, and they do five, they get ten.
Right.
If it would help strengthen it, we could provide a condition of development approval because it is a PUD. We could put in there that the required parking space is per the number of units. And if that changes over time, it's in the PUD. So, now they've got four, and in five years, they decide they want to have two more units. It's still consistent with the PUD that they make, they make sure that the required parking is on the site. And if you want to do a strengthened agreement, then also as part of the sale, I think that could go hand in hand. But we can strengthen it by putting that as a condition of approval.
Okay, that's good. So, would you recommend that you make those changes before our first reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question before we move forward.
Okay.
So, between the last meeting and this meeting, there's been some discussion on continuing the use of using the parking lot for city parking. So, I just want to clarify that are, is there any intention to subdivide the property? So, yes, there is? The parking lot?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so, okay.
And that would depend on how many dwelling units the buyer or the developer wants to put in.
Oh, so that's why we're not doing it now? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, that's fine, and if you have an agreement, because if this is going to be a separate piece, it's still going to be a PUD. It's still going to have the PUD designation on it. So, it would just be, it would be a shared agreement, I suppose, but it would be consistent with the PUD if we put that as a development condition.
Couldn't you basically just divide the two parcels and then have a contract with regard to the parking spaces for a small portion of that second parcel?
Yeah, you could do that, and that's what I'm saying, the city could do that as a contingency of the sale, right, in some sort of agreement, but in, through the zoning process, through the PUD, we can establish that. But at this point, we don't know how many parking spaces, or how many units are going to go in, it could be ten, so I would be reluctant to say it needs X number of spots. I would put it based on the number of units that are utilized by, well, in this case, it's still under one property right now.
Yeah. Jerry, I believe what you were suggesting is that we take all of the parking away from the building, and then we simply lease back or contract back however many is needed?
That's basically what I was saying, basically, it makes it cleaner to me.
Keep the parking?
Yeah, just take the parking out of it.
With the intention that you give them as much as they need?
Right, it'll be up to the developer to see what he needs, and then we work it out that way. Otherwise, it's all ours.
When it makes the deal, then you can just go ahead and write in.
Real quick, okay. So, the parking lot is approximately 20,000 square feet. The property is just under an acre. The parking lot being 20,000 square feet means it's almost half an acre. So, that means with the, if you basically sell off the parking lot on its own, because it's one thing to be able to say, yes, we'll sell off the parking lot separately, and we'll still allow you to use parking, that's fine, but it's another thing when you sell off the parking lots by itself, and then you reduce the amount of density that the actual apartment complex can get. So, I just want you to be cognizant of that, that if we actually divide off the entire parking lot, let me use a math, 23,000 times...
So, let me just clarify, I think what Dana's trying to get at is right now, to get to that density, it's based, it is based on the acreage of property.
So, that could be, because it's our building, because we're the one proposing what we want with the building, we are our own entity here, we can designate how many, you know, when we do the marketing of the building, you know, have a clause in there that says that we will yield the number of parking spots depending on the number of dwellings put upstairs.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely fine, as long as that agreement's there. I mean, it's a parking lot, and the parking lot is not going anywhere, it's part of the use of this building, which will get approved under the PUD, and then it'll have any other agreements you all want to put in there as the safety for you all, to make sure that the parking is used as you want it to be used. But I think under the approval, it could, regardless of the separation of the property, it's, the only thing I can see where it might become an issue is if you, somebody, you sell it to someone, and then they sell it to two different entities. And unless there's something in that agreement, and in that sale, that strengthens what the initial PUD approval would be, which is based on the full acreage of the entire property being used as the building, and here's the parking for the building, and it's one acre, it would be an eventual sale where you'd have two different areas.
I would have no problem just keeping the parking in the city's name and leasing just the parking spots needed for the dwellings, and whether they need ten, fifteen, or twenty, doesn't make any difference to me, I want to own the parking lot, I want to have control over the parking. And because it's city property that we need, there's a lot of businesses back there as well that use it, and I want to keep that as a public parking area. So, if we can, you know, we can just market it that way, we get the building, and you'll get as many leased spots as you need.
Yeah.
So, ultimately, your intent is, is that when you split it, you would sell just the building?
Correct.
You would keep the parking.
Yeah.
I would think that it depends, just contingent on that sale, it's just the understanding that this is part of a PUD?
Yeah.
And that density and everything is calculated based on the full acreage.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes it more comfortable. It makes it, you know, you don't have liability in the parking, maintenance of the parking, any of that, you don't have to control the parking, we get to do that. Anyway, that's how, you know, we want to do this, I mean, that's how I would encourage it, if we own the parking, I think it's really important that we maintain control of that.
Would the people that stay in these units, would they want to sign parking?
That would be up to them.
They'll get it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about the rest of the building downstairs?
Well, it's C4, so they don't require parking.
Okay, so, all right.
There's a big city-owned parking lot behind the building they need.
Right.
So, Jeff, there, was there still something that you wanted to change before we had our first reading?
No, well, again, if you all would like us to put a condition of development approval in there, we could do that, which would just, we don't have to do that, it would just simply strengthen, I think, that if that portion of the property is sold, that although it's in the C4 Zoning District, and generally, there's exempt parking, the PUD would still roll with the PUD, that however many units come in, they're going to have to establish parking, and it would be on that portion of the property.
Yeah.
Jerry, I defer to you, what is your call? Should we wait and make that change, or is it okay to approve now?
I don't see a reason why it's not okay to approve now.
Okay. Is any of the council?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 07-2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. One other thing is, you know, we recently tore down what was the Wild Building. Eventually, that building is to be rebuilt, or a similar building is to be rebuilt, we're going to have this exact same issue. So, I personally would be in favor of looking at possibly rezoning that property as well, so that way, whoever gets a hold of that building, or wants to rebuild that building, it could be two stories or three stories, and we allow it to three stories in downtown. So, we need to make sure that whatever they build, they would also be able to actually get that done.
Also, Garrett, if it would be feasible, I don't know if the council would be interested in this either, but the property where we demoed the little house across the street from the Brickle in the back half of East Pine is currently R1A. If we rezone that to C4, then it would be more compatible with that one particular street, because right now, it's R1A between the post office and a C4.
Right, I know our intention was to eventually make that part of-
Parking, yeah, but you'd still have to rezone it to do a parking lot? Or no? Do you have to rezone that to do a parking lot?
What is the, it's-
Right now, it's R1A.
There could be a lot of satellite parking lots in the original zoning districts.
Okay, well, if it does not allow us, and you can check that out, then we would like to rezone it.
You know which one I'm talking about?
Uh, it's familiar.
Immediately to the south, immediately to the south of the parking lot, there's this little parcel there between a big white building on the corner and the post office.
Yep.
That little sliver of land in there belongs to the city.
Anything else for Jeff and Dan?
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
We thank you very much. All right, we have an annual interlocal agreement with Highlands County for maintenance of recreational facilities. Kim?
That's, excuse me, that's the same maintenance agreement that we do every year with them, and so, it's just basic, actually, for $110,000.
Maria was talking.
I'm sorry, I didn't remember if we voted on that one or not, it just, I have short-term memory issue there, we did vote on that, right? Okay.
All right, so it's the same interlocal that we've had every year? Is there any questions on that interlocal? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Garrett, wait a minute, I think I have a question.
Okay.
The recreational interlocal agreement, correct?
Correct.
Right, for the recreational maintenance, it's the one we do every year for $110,000.
But, okay, did this include the property over by Lake Tulane, the rep, that playground area over there?
Lake Tulane Beach, permitted swimming area.
So, this isn't to do with the county, this isn't to do with the playground equipment, this covers our payroll expenses, street sweeping, percentage of lawn horsemen.
It used to be 250, you know, then it was 150, now it's 110.
I keep losing my advice.
This is just general operation expenses that we can get reimbursed from the county.
That's all this is.
But would that Lake Tulane Beach is listed on exhibit A?
It is listed here.
Yes. There's a complete list of all the parks. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion, we approve the contract agreement between the county and the city to go park for parking units.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Breland, did you have more questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
We will now call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, item number 10, we have here-
Garrett, I want to have a question, I just want to make a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
For the Lake Tulane permitted swimming area, is this, does this grant take care of the cleaning out of that area? His or her staff, who were called on the city records. Okay, but the lake, it says-
When we used to have, what's it called, the city, Preston, Preston used to do a portion of this, it was covered in this interval room as well. So, with us now, if the staff that does it is included?
Because the Lake Tulane swimming area really, really needs to be cleaned out. It's brought to my attention today just before I came to this-
It's unswimable.
Yes, so-
With grass or trash?
Grass, yeah, yeah. This grass is all grown up over there, always there, so, yeah.
Yeah, we have, I'm not exactly sure what equipment we use to take care of all of our beaches, but I don't think that we have a sand-specific machine that works rather well, they do make some, and potentially, in our next budget, or a budget after, we might want to look at having some type of a beach-specific machine that would be able to groom our beaches more often and with less man hours.
When we built, uh, Dallas Park? Okay.
It's been a while.
Yes.
I know that, I'm sorry, Robert Trevino himself, I know, I discussed it with him probably a year ago, and he had went out there with some type of a tractor, I think it might have been even a fox player or a rotor killer, neither one are incredibly effective at what they do.
It's just had to be done continuously, it's just those roots and those grasses.
Once the grass is allowed to establish, it's now in the sand, and it's hard to get it out. I think it comes down to probably not having enough staff to hear about something.
We have some lack to do.
We do-
Well-
Mark, you know, Mitch used to do that at the beach on Lake, on both lakes, he went there with some little bulldozer-looking thing, and would just really groom it beautifully, and it would clean up all of the grass and stuff, he knows how to do it.
And let me just say, the reason why I'm asking is because although the summer is coming up, and I'm going to get 50 million different calls about why can't we swim that Lake Tulane, because the grass is too high, and that kind of situation, so I would like to kind of like address that beforehand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, or, you know, coming up possibly with a more firm maintenance schedule for the beaches, you know?
Now, I've already gotten those calls, Councilwoman, which will be great, and I have one here.
Okay. Have we made a motion on this interlocal? We have.
Yes, yes.
And we've already approved it?
Yes.
Is there any further questions on the interlocal?
Yes.
Seeing none, item number 10, the airport coronavirus response grant program. Ms. Phillips?
FAA has come forward with additional COVID funding. The city would like to recommend using it for debt services again, same loan. If you look at the revised loan, and I can't say these words.
Amortization?
You can see where we used the $30,000 from the previous grant that we received. The proposed new loan schedule, this is what I'm suggesting, we already have budgeted $13,000 payment for this fiscal year. I would suggest using only $4,592.36 of it, and letting the $13,000 grant that FAA has come forward to us with to pay this loan completely off.
Right, what?
Pay the loan completely off, if we make this payment, because right now, we only owe $17,292.36.
Okay, anyone opposed to that? Do we have a motion? Garrett, so move?
So move.
Correct.
I'm seeking.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, item number-
Would like to suggest we allocate the $11,000 to other communities that we might incur for early costs of the year.
Okay, is there a motion to revert the other $11,000, some odd dollars, for other costs incurred with the airport?
Like what?
Any attorneys fees that we might incur?
It's general fund money, is it not? Or is it airport money? What would you recommend?
I think she did.
Okay, all right, okay, I'm okay with that.
I am too. I'll so move.
And second, yes.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further questions, clarification? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item number 11, purchase of meters. Mr. Rick Reed, is he on line with us? Is Rick's available?
I'm here.
Rick Reed, you want to buy some meters? Why should we let you do that?
Well, we've got about a thousand dead, they need to be replaced.
Good point. Do we have any questions for Rick on these meters? This is something that we generally do every year.
Is this part of the program of replacing them, we were going to do 500 a year or something like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll make a motion, we approve 11 purchases of water meters.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, was there questions on this? No. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item number 12, we have the road paving list. Let's see, David Roberts. Do we have David Roberts with us?
I'm here, sir.
All right, so we have a list here, does the council have any questions or proposed changes from Mr. Roberts?
I, I, we'll go over here, you probably haven't seen one.
We have, yeah, we have some of these.
I'll let him back those to pick for, then I, come here.
Okay, I, I, I got some proof on my phone, we're running two pictures of all the lists that we've held here. My question is, who compiled this list? And I see that it said same day, does that mean that they're all going to be paved the same day, or are we going from one to seven, leaving one side wide open and the other side done? How are we doing this?
Now, the way I did that plan, from my past experience, I based it off the roads that are fairly close together, where they could, whoever paves it, instead of loading their equipment up on trucks and trailer and somewhere else, they could just drive the paver and roller like around the corner, or down the street a little bit, and accomplish the task in one day. Just, well, just one section, like for group one, or individual groups would be just one day, not all seven together.
So, both lanes of traffic would be completed in the same day, you're saying?
That's correct, yep.
And then there were a few, I can't see you, but there were a few that I saw that wasn't on the list. Did you look all over Avon Park?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, didn't hear you.
Surely, you have to almost yell into your microphone.
Mr. Roberts.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
When you did this, were you all, were you all the way over far, north, south, east, west, wherever central?
I was, I went all over, there's, there's multiple roads that could be paved, I chose these roads because they're, they all need it, and they're all within driving distance of a paver, paving equipment.
Okay, oh, did you, do you know that first sale wrong?
I do, and that's, that's another, it's on my agenda, I've already got a request out for an estimate for that.
Okay.
That's gonna take more, that's gonna take more than just a resurface and paving.
What about the area off of Queen Power that goes into Hatcher, that has those big, huge pool looking, I guess the concrete, whatever the phosphate has come out of the road, did you look at that, that triangle?
Um, I would have to look at that, I didn't, haven't noticed that one.
Okay.
Perhaps, have you looked at how much is left in our budget, how much more money we have to work with, maybe that'd be a good number for us to know.
Anarch, oh, sorry.
We had, we had three hundred thousand total, is that correct?
That's correct.
This is two hundred and sixty-eight of it. So, as you can see, most of these groups are anywhere from thirty to about forty-five thousand. So it looks like we've got possibly enough room for one more group, or we would have to change some of these groups, so just so the council knows that's what kind of money we're dealing with.
Well, the reason I left that gap at the end is just, just case thing, you know what I mean?
Right.
In case something happens, we have, you know, a little bit of wiggle room to, to work with.
Right, and then of course, if there is money left over at the end of it, then we would explore our options at that point, you're saying?
Oh yeah, definitely.
So, this is obviously something that we do every year, and we don't have unlimited funds, so we only have so much money to work with, so we're just trying to make the best use of our three hundred thousand for this year's allotment.
I have a question, on group two, I don't think we own any of those roads.
Thank you, that was my question. And, and, and I think we did pay those roads out back.
We filled potholes with coal, asphalt, only because there was.
Dump truck, I mean, garbage trucks and cars.
You know, that's such an old subdivision, and I remember Jerry, you were probably here at the time, but then if we do it, then we own them, or we don't own them, it's, they don't have a homeowners association anymore, it's such an old subdivision and.
If you, if you need a lot of use out of a road, maintain it, then you, there's a statutory procedure for taking the roads over. And, but, if you don't use it, it's inside of the subdivision, and purely is benefiting those people in the subdivision, you really, you can't lawfully claim to pay them.
We had talked one time about some type of assessment fees.
Yeah, they, they weren't interested.
Yeah, but I mean, they may want to. Put our money in it, they.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really not your responsibility.
I mean, I would love for them to have some level, because there's another road just across between highway six, I'm sorry, between Main Street and Pine, there's a little subdivision, these houses frontage is Lake Verona, or the, you know, the road, and there's a little dirt road back there that our, our garbage truck uses, and I don't know that that was ever intended to be a road, but there are ruts, and people use it, and they park on it, and garbage cans sit on it, at some point in time, those people are gonna want that paved, I don't know who owns it. But, this, this property here, I remember you talking about an assessment, and most of them are rentals. And Mr. Beetle, if you remember Mr. Beetle, he's the one that came up and just went on and on about, you know, getting it paved, and we ended up going a certain route so that our garbage trucks would never have to back up, they would just.
I, I recall telling, I think it was Julie, and you know, just, yeah, do it, it's case law at that point, that, that's basically spending public funds for private interests.
So I mean, we could, we send them a letter and say that, you know, we would love for them to do an assessment for their own streets and stuff, because that right there releases forty thousand dollars for other areas in town.
I think, I'm, I'm, an assessment, you know, but I, you know, collected, and so I, I think the issue, an issue that you could consider. So if you get a really good price on it, you can say, if you're willing to pay us to do it, we'd be willing to take care of it, because we're getting a price, you know, a little price on it. But they would have to pay you, and make sure that they paid you, because like I said, it's, it's pretty clearly a problem constitutionally.
I think many of the residents in that community feel that we own them, and that we're just derelict of our duty, and when in reality, it should be the homeowners or the, the owners that rent out. It's unfortunate that they moved into an area like that, thinking that, you know, it's our responsibility.
Yeah, it's, it was, and it's not your responsibility, it should be assigned basically, so, you know, this is private roads, or is it, usually, you know, there's a different sign designated between roads that are owned by the government and roads that are private. But either way, it's not your responsibility to make sure that they know that.
So Rick came back and asked the question of Rick, is it full of potholes all over again, and, and no, or is it still looking relative, relatively decent, and, and navigable?
David, she started, you and not Rick.
Which road, which road was it?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Trying to know how bad, how bad the roads are.
Is it group two streets?
Yeah.
Uh, there was roads in that subdivision that were, I could tell they were paved within seven or eight years, maybe ten years ago. And the three that are on here weren't done at that time, and that's why I chose those three roads in that section.
Well, I, I recall, they were paved, and sort of brought up that point, and unfortunately, they asked me if they were allowed to do it again, and I said no. So that really, it was done by accident before, nothing you can do about that.
If it, if it's an accident that it's on, that I put it on there, then that's totally fine, I can, I can find some other areas.
It was done in two thousand and eleven, because you look at the property appraisers, it looks like we own the roads, and it was over, it was in twenty eleven, you and I just looked, and it was.
Yeah, it's, um, twenty eleven, there was a manners overlay that was done, and it was about forty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so why don't we approve it with, with the exception of group two, until we find out if we really do own them or do not own them?
We don't. I got a question on group one as well. Because I drove down group one, and I didn't see, maybe, maybe I don't know what I'm looking for, Rick Roberts, I mean Dave, what is his name? His name need to be big, Rick is bigger, that's what I see, so group one, and I, and I did not understand why this need to be paid.
Paul Meadow feeds the elementary school up to the, at the top of the hill. If you continue up the top of the hill towards the school, the entire right side edge of the road on the, on the orange grove side has deteriorated, and it's eating into the actual pathway of the traffic.
That's what I wasn't sure of, because I just looked down the straight down the middle of the road, and it looked perfectly fine to me, but, and I said, well, that's why I'm asking. So the edges of the road dictate if it needs to be paved or not.
Yes ma'am, that's a major factor, especially in that area, there's a couple spots that jut out from the edge, probably a good three or four feet into the travel lane.
Yeah, at, at Speedy Park Elementary there, they, they have a, a serious issue with their drop off and pickup scenario. They have way too much traffic for what they have facilities to hold, and I'm not sure.
Sidewalks, it's, it's a continuous.
I'm not sure what the ramifications the city, you know, can do, or what we can ask them to do, but I know that no matter how you slice it, it's a very expensive proposition to rectify the situation they have, because they, they just don't have the drive space, parking area.
I had another question in regards to ownership, do we own Hell McRae Boulevard? Because I remember there was a grant that was provided by the, the county, and they managed it and all, and it was their job, and it was at the time, they, they took care of the whole project as though it was their, their street. I'm just wondering if it's one of those hurricane, you know, there are several, Memorial is another one, I believe, is owned by the county, but it cuts right through the city, so.
Memorial, I know, but I didn't know that way.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I never heard of that one.
But in terms of Memorial, I mean, do we have an agreement with the county that says that we have to pave and maintain it, because when there was that big divot in there, and there was like a sinkhole?
It wasn't that we had to maintain it because it was our sewer system, not because of the road.
Right, but that was when someone said it's not our road, but then we had to end up doing it because it was our sewer system, so I'm just wondering, is Memorial ours?
I think Memorial is not ours.
No, it's not, that's why I'm saying, so should we be going, I mean, I, I know it says from Memorial to South Verona, you know, are we going to be paving any part of Memorial?
Can I say something?
Yes.
I was told from James Goings, coming down Memorial, and I, you know, I could be wrong, this is, you know, so I'm just trying to let you know what I was told. The county owned up to the four-way stop sign there. Uh, south of the four-lane stop sign was the county's road, and if you notice, the sidewalks are a lot wider and nicer through that area. Uh, so I am under the understanding that anything south of the four-way stop sign is owned by the county.
Is that in writing somewhere, because I know for a fact that the reason why that, that was all done with a grant, a DOT grant, for that widening of the sidewalks, and the only reason why they didn't go further north was because we had so many light poles and electric poles, that it was gonna be too cumbersome engineering wise to put more of that sidewalk to go all the way to Main Street, because we wanted a bike path to go through the middle of town. So I don't know if that, just because the, the sidewalk stops there, I don't believe is the reason that it should be designated as ours and theirs.
Perhaps Jerry could find out for us?
Well, the, the county engineer's office should have a listing of all of the roads that they own, yeah.
I know, I know that the county mows that right away as well.
Yeah.
Which is usually an indication they own it.
Obviously, we need to, we need to find out for sure, especially with anything that we're proposing to pave here. So perhaps we could point out all the ones that are in question and approve the rest.
Yeah, if, if there's a map that the county has that shows what they own, I mean, if we own Memorial, then great, let's go ahead and work on it. But I just want to make sure, because it's supposed to be some kind of a hurricane exit road, and I forgot, there's a need for that stuff, and all of those were counted in.
Okay, so at this point in time, it's only group two?
Yeah.
And?
Seven?
Group seven? Is there any other groups that are in question of ownership?
Maria, wait a minute, oh, Verona, don't we?
I'm not proposing any paving on Memorial itself, it's right to the, uh, earnest sense.
That is okay.
The group two is the only one in question.
Maria, are you still questioning Hell McRae, are we gonna get a whole list of?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if it is, I, I'm not sure.
Get a list of all of them, okay.
So I see.
Hell McRae belongs, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead here.
You've got, okay, nevermind, he's right, two and five?
Two and five?
Two and five is the only ones in question of ownership?
To South Lake Grove. Why is two, why five is in question?
Because of Hell McRae.
Hell McRae.
We named it.
But that's okay, I mean, we remember on the church what got annexed in, I mean, there's still county property on Hell McRae. That's county's own, it's not city owned.
So can I absolutely certain, then you should just go ahead and exclude it?
Yeah, I mean, he'll have, he'll have his hands full with all the other groups, right?
Okay.
And I have one last question for Dave, I'm sorry, is there a priority that you're doing any of these in, in the groups, I mean, are you gonna start with one and work your way through seven, or is it just an arbitrary list?
I just made the list and grouped them accordingly, not, not in a certain order, important, I just, in groups together.
Alright, so is there a motion to approve the list excluding group two and group five?
I'll make the motion to that effect.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Obviously, the intention is to find out if we do in fact own those roads or not, and take that up at our next meeting. Was there any other proposals made by any council members for additional road?
Purcell Street and South Carolina Avenue.
Okay, so Mr. Roberts, would it be possible for you to get quotes on that, on those roads, or any other additional roads that you propose at, before our next meeting?
Uh, Purcell Street, and what was the other one?
South Carolina.
Purcell Street is, Purcell Street runs into South Carolina.
Right.
So it's a little short street there, so.
Yeah, so, so Purcell, Purcell Street, and what was the other road that you wanted?
No.
Or is that?
It, it intersects with South Carolina.
I've already, I've already got a estimate.
Right at, at Queen Power that runs into Hatcher, it's Queen Power on one side, Hatcher's on the other one, and the road runs right into both of them.
Okay.
If you agree with it, Mr. Roberts.
If he has trouble finding, obviously he can reach out to you, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then Mr. Roberts, if there's any other proposals that you have, by all means, bring those forward.
Yes.
In our next meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Item number thirteen, we have a public hearing for the first reading of ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty-one, annexing Emmett and Arastha Grove LLC.
I just have a question for the court, that section three, items A and B have been accomplished?
On the checklist?
Well, on the, on the ordinance and checklist, the checklist, there was a, that's just taken from the checklist, essentially.
Tell me what that is.
Yeah, you have to send a certified mail to the board of county commissioners, at least ten days before notice is published, and then the map and advertisement, that is a notice attached to the residency, has to be posted, published at least once a week for two consecutive weeks prior to passage at the first reading.
After first reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will do that.
Okay, so we can't really read this until, until it's been done.
So is that for first reading?
Yeah, no, prior to fir- first reading.
Well, prior to first reading, I'll, I'll do it this weekend.
Okay, so, okay.
So we'll, we'll postpone this then?
Right.
But if we're postponing, can we, can I still ask some questions?
Sure.
On page two, section one, part D, is the only section that's contiguous to city property, and it's across the street on the corner, like catty corner, is that considered contiguous? So.
Yeah, streets don't, don't break continuity, but, you know, it, it.
The way here, I mean, what I'm saying is, you've got the property across the street, like here Jerry, that's city property, and this one in question is right here. It's not here, you know what I mean, it's just on a corner across the street.
I'm not sure you're correct. I think it's contiguous by a large majority.
I think, uh, uh, my recollection was there was more of those contiguous than that.
Yeah, if you look on the property appraiser.
But I, I always rely, rely on their information.
I did look on the property appraisers website, I mean, if you saw something different than me, I mean, I, I, I studied it quite thoroughly, so I, I might be wrong, but.
But in either case.
Because they own, they do own a lot of the property that puts up to a miracle, but that's not the property in question that's annexed.
Right.
What they want to do is further down across from Mr. Sullivan's property.
There was a prior annexation, I'm sorry.
Um, I didn't see it on the property appraisers website.
May not have gone there, but I, I, I don't know, I remind, you know, I don't generally do these maps, and usually done by the board of the county council, because we put one link in the assembly, or the assembly or whatever, then, uh, I was asked to do it, and so I put it together, and I have live information to figure.
But even if it's across the intersection, is there any?
No, well, that's, that's a matter of opinion, it's a particular continuity, but usually it's, it's.
I mean, I don't care if it isn't, I'm just, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, well, that's the point I'm thinking, is children, the county says, well, we don't think that's contiguous, and that's what we're gonna oppose it. And usually it's not the city, saying, but I wanna, but I wanna do it, because it's particularly, particularly.
Well, I think we're all in big group approving, it'll be approved.
But it does need to be contiguous according to statute. And it's supposed to be substantially contiguous. But I, I don't know, you say that, but it's like, uh, what I, what I saw appeared to be more contiguous than just a catty corner.
I agree.
But it has to be pumped anyway, so, I mean, guests, we asked somebody to look at that.
I mean, if it is, great, if it's a rock thrown, then fine, that's not a problem, I just want to make sure that it was properly drawn.
So, Kim, you will advertise it, and we will have that information hashed out before our next meeting, right?
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, if you look at the map, you know, it looks like the map is.
Yeah, but that map doesn't cover it all, it, it's.
The map needs to be accurate, so.
Yeah, that map is not accurate, there's a big chunk there, it's, it's like in the shape of a flag, what they want to annex in is in the shape of a flag, and this right here is just a.
Okay, then I, I, you know, I pretty much have to rely on whoever is going to propose this to fix it up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is your question on, you know, the property being contiguous to another piece of property?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the two pieces of Grove, right, all, right next to it, according to the property appraiser, are in the city.
Well, it, it, yeah, it has to be contiguous to the city limits, you know, substantially contiguous, which is, there's a lot of case law as to what that means, but it really has to do with the size of the property being part of the annexed in, yeah, compared to how much it's touching the existing city limits.
Well, the pieces that are as big as what's being annexed are right next to it.
Right, it clearly shows.
But, it looks, it looks like it's a need for a basic accounting, they certainly, but I rely on their personnel.
This is one of the proposed.
Yeah, what they want to annex in is that one, that one, and those two.
But they're all contiguous?
Those are contiguous to themselves, but these right here are not. No, those are not part of the property, these are not part of the. No, those are not part of the property, these are not part of the.
But they're already in the city.
Yeah, they're already in the city right now.
Right.
Yeah, you guys have to, speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Okay, it clearly shows on the property appraiser that they're more than contiguous.
Okay.
Right. So we need to advertise it for two weeks before our next meeting, which we can do.
Notice has to go to the, before you do advertise, at least ten days prior to the notice, you know, with the checklist, um, you have to send a certified mail to, to the board of county commissioners with our notice and so on.
Which means.
So it will be, it will be available then at the first meeting, right?
Okay, normally, whenever people annex, uh, there's a zoning change associated with it, was there any indication that there was a request for that, or?
No, um, he's already, um, annexed the property in, I think it was like seventy-three acres or seventy-five acres before, and he hasn't done any zoning changes to this state, so he hasn't annexed it yet.
Okay.
I, I know you all like, I would at least previously like annexing in, and so I've tried to accommodate that, but I, I would much prefer that, you know, a, surveyor or, you know, engineer puts these maps together because, you know, then somebody is actually certifying, they've looked at all this stuff in, and have drawn it out properly, rather than, you know, my putting dots on a hand drawn on a map and then trying to put that into the contract, so, you know, I don't have, I don't have the, programs to, you know, do a nice map like they do, so I think you might want to make that a requirement for zoning or for annexations. Because you're paying me basically to, you know, do stuff on, by hand, and it's not right.
All right, anything else on the first reading? And then move on to the public hearing for a second reading of ordinance oh six dash twenty twenty-one, will be the public hearing.
Ordinance on the city, they want part four, providing the cycles as to the council intent, I'm making the city code by adding section ninety-eight dash two to article one, chapter ninety-eight, adding provisions for payment plans of water and wastewater capacity fees under certain circumstances. Providing for collections and foreclosure, providing for conflicts, providing for altercation, repeal of conflicting codes, ordinance system resolutions, provide for severability, provide an effective.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion, group I, number D fourteen.
Second.
Okay, this will be a public hearing, public hearing for ordinance oh six dash twenty twenty-one is now open, anyone wishing to speak can now do so. Seeing no hands. Public hearing for ordinance oh six dash twenty twenty-one is now closed, we've made a motion in a second, is there any further questions?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Jerry, on page one, it talks about foreclosure, can you foreclose on a homestead?
No.
So it says here, uh, payment plans that are not adhered to by the owners should be fore, should be foreclosed to protect the city finances, I mean.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the thing, is we still need to conform that have, that, it's just, it could be like a mortgage that you're putting out at where.
A lien, yeah, but I need, I don't want.
But maybe you can foreclose, a mortgage, it's, it's a private contract, you can't do a lien like a mechanic's lien against a homestead, and you can't do it co-enforcementally, but say, you can do it for water. Well, in the case of a private contract, which is a lien basically, or giving them a loan, so it will probably take the position behind the mortgage company, which, you know, sometimes you have to get paid anyway, but, you know, um, it would be, it would definitely be enforceable, but it wouldn't be a, you know, because it's homestead, but we have to use proper form when we do that, you know, I, I'm like certain, that's the proper form that you have.
Is that something that you're actively working on?
Yeah, I might have something to do more with those, uh, proposals to put together, contract for us to that.
All right, and then on page two, section two, it talks about the interest rate, um, that by resolution, the city council would have to make that resolution.
Yeah.
Um, what would he, I mean, would, does a resolution need to accompany those ordinance?
Um, I, this is, this didn't change from the previous time you had that in place, and I don't know if you've done those resolutions in the past. Personally, I prefer to tie it to something like prime rate, but, um, you know, this is what is, this is what is in there, and I just put it back in.
Uh, you know, we're gonna forget to do resolutions every year or something like this.
My, my point to you too.
So if you tie it to prime, it could go up or down?
Yeah, we can mend this later on, but right now, you know, you can, and we can have a resolution to give us the first year, if you wish, but, um, yeah, I don't think we have any that are going out tomorrow that I'm, that I'm aware of.
No, but, so, but, okay, so I had another question, I lost my page here. On page two, section, section six, where it talks about staff shall evaluate the ability of the applicant to make the payments in a timely manner, including at a minimum, in view of whether the equity in the property to be leaned is sufficient to pay the full amount, we don't have finance officers and bankers on our staff. Is there any way to simplify that, or I mean, is that, or is that gonna be in the questionnaire on the form that people fill out?
But, yeah.
I mean, I don't know the chances that this would ever have to have, go into effect, but.
Well, if it's just a questionnaire, I mean, some people, those would be a lot of honest people, but there will be some, less than honest people, that'll something put down, whatever they, they do, you know, they'd like to say. So you gotta have some way of verification.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it's just so cumbersome, I mean, I understand what we're trying to do here, but is there any way to simplify it, streamline it to where the language is not so, I don't know, is it too wordy, or is it, is this an essential element to this?
Is I, I just, I just put it back in.
Okay.
We couldn't have.
But I, but I, I agree, I mean, I, I'd like to see it simpler, but why don't we be simpler, I mean, we don't have a bank and staff on here, is there?
A letter from a bank, would a letter from a bank suffice?
No, you get consultant, a bank consultant or something like that, it's basically.
No, that, that, that the owner gets from their bank.
Oh.
Why can't you just use the property appraiser value?
Do you think that's staying accurate?
Well, it's always lower than the real value.
Yeah, but that, you know, it's, it's.
It's better than nothing.
Commercial property could be different, though, but I.
Okay, I'm trying to advocate for staff, I don't hear anything from them, so.
No, I agree with it, but what the mayor brought up, that's what I was gonna do, go on property appraiser, see what's better. But if you look at the property appraiser and it doesn't meet it, then at that point, you could request that they bring a letter from their bank saying they have adequate funds, or that the improvements that they're going to make are adequate, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I, well, and it could be substantial, I know.
So in, in the case of a vacant property, if they're gonna build a factory that's worth twenty million dollars, and they're asking for a heck of a lot of water that could cost a great deal, you know?
It doesn't apply though anyways, residential.
Well, that's a good point, yeah, so if it's a, if it's a single lot and they're gonna build a half million dollar house, then that lot may only be worth twenty thousand dollars, but, you know, they're.
My recollection doesn't apply there either, it's really, if you're expanding, if you run a new line, your mandatory connection policy makes people connect, then.
So I, I'm, I'm not seeing a problem, is what I'm getting at.
Well, I could back in because I didn't see a problem, I didn't, you know, I wasn't happy, you know, totally happy with the language, but.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, you've lived with it for, for a lot of years already, so somehow it's worked out, I, I suppose.
Well, I mean, is there room for error, that's, I guess, my question, you know, would there be an error using the property appraiser's website, would staff, would we be confident enough in staff themselves that they could do it without having to, you know, hire another person to do some consulting for them?
Yeah, um, I mean, there's always.
That chance.
Yeah, you always take that chance, and I think that.
This falls under the other.
Point is not, is not far off, you know, as far as residential properties generally are, are underpriced unless they've made substantial improvements, which case, it's their job to prove that it's worth that.
But look, look at the value of what you're connecting with, I mean, the, the, the connection cost at absolute most might be five thousand dollars to a residential house. So, if it's, if it's a, a unit that is dwellable, I can assure you, it'll be worth more than five thousand dollars.
Daniel, you had something?
Yes, okay, if, if we're putting this back in exactly the way it is, we have no issues in utility billing with it. Contractors for new, new constructions, they don't do loans, I mean, they pay for it upfront under their agreement with that homeowner. The only thing the homeowner does is sign the annexation.
Yeah.
The covenant on.
Well.
But the contractors don't do the loans on, on these properties to do new installs. The loans is, is for the existing dwellings that we already have, and we've never done any credit checks or, or financing checks or anything like that, is you, you, we proved that you're the owner, you sign the documents, we put a lien on your property until the loan's paid off.
Okay.
And if you sell the property, the title companies come to us, what's the payoff, they turn around and write us a check, we've never had any issues, so if you put everything back in the way it was, we should not have any issues.
But we have, but we have to do it.
Yes, and putting it back in.
That's, that's the thing, they're not doing it, they're not, they're not, when they're brought to me to sign right now, it's gonna be council signing from now on, but I signed now, they don't show me where they went in and show this property is valuable and things, so, if it worked yet, but they're not doing it, but it's in there, they will be doing it.
Okay, so is there any language that you need, that you feel needs to be added so that your staff can check on the property appraiser website?
I think with everything I heard here, we're fine with it.
I think they can do is go ahead and pass this, get us back into, into the code, and then let, just tell us if there's a problem with it, and we'll, we can fix it.
Mark, did I hear you say that this was gonna come back to council every time?
Or? Council, council does to approve, it's not city manager.
Okay, so there's another one of those things, Jerry, you know, that comes to us, do we really have to do this, or can he just do that where he's sitting?
It's up to you, he's only gave that authority to the city manager.
Well, I mean, it's a city manager, former government. I'm just saying.
I think the city manager would do it.
But contracts all have to be signed by the mayor, and the mayor can't sign unless approved by the council, so.
You're right, it's a contract. And they're not that way.
Let's go ahead and get it in place, and if you want it tweaked later, then, you know, clearly you can do that.
Okay, very good.
And my last question was, obviously, A was missing on section, page two, section seven, you're gonna have that at the next meeting so that we can do that when it gets approved the second time? Exhibit A, yeah.
You have to pass it to find out what's in it, guys, we all know.
Yes.
We've, we've been down this road before.
And it's a two-page one, so instead of seven thousand pages.
I have a question for Danielle, Danielle, at what point do the arrears become problematic? I mean, how sue typically in the water department, you know, when someone is in arrears, does, is there any action taken?
Uh, they don't make a payment, we find law for non-payment, they have seven days for the cutoff, they close the account, if there's a loan on that account, we close it, the full amount shows up as an operating balance.
How often is that?
Eh, not that often.
Okay. I think we're good, let's vote, so for the questions, we'll call a roll.
Do we have a motion?
Did you have a motion?
Yes.
We did, yes. Motion in a second.
We did?
Yep.
Who made the motion?
Jim.
Yeah, Jim made it, yeah.
And Miss Shirley, second, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, last but not least, item number fifteen, regular updates from the city manager.
The, uh, D E O drinking water infrastructure grant, last time I talked to you, um, the onsite visit was gonna happen, but then next week, they came onsite, um, Rick Whalen and Carl, and I don't remember who else, but they took them around, they had some questions for us, mainly was matching up to mitigation for, their, their definition mitigation, that was worked on by Rick W. and, um, and Carl and Corbett, and that was, um, provided to D E O., so we're waiting to hear back on that. They said everything else other than that looked good. The, um, our state inmates, um, squads, you didn't see them out today because last Thursday, they usually work Monday to Thursday, they're calling them in maybe up to fourteen weeks. I called out and I spoke to the warden, had a nice talk with them, they're calling men across the entire state, all the ones that you won't see them out working with DOT right now, or with counties, or with municipalities. And it's because they're, they're short-staffed, he said it actually isn't hiring against the amount of people they have out on Workman's Comp and Fimling that, so they have minimum mandatory, they have to, to fill in their, their seats, so they're pulling them in. However, I'm getting with the warden, touching base, yelling this week, Kim and I are gonna go have lunch, and he's got some ideas what we may be able to do with the work crew, if we actually get a guy trained, we may go out and pick him up, and even when they do come back working, we may be able to get another squad, five people out here to get some things done. So it sounded real positive, so I'm gonna meet with him hopefully this week, and grab lunch and have a talk about that. The, uh, the old city ledgers and tax rolls, um, Kim just heard back this morning from Nancy Fisk, Historic Society, they weren't too sure, they were interested in them at first, but now they are, they said, yes, they want them, so, she's gonna come in after the eighteenth, get done with some other stuff they got, and, um, we'll help them, because they're not too late, we'll help them get them over there, so, that's, uh, good on them, that they, they can be saved. The sodding at the old Wild Building, a little that was brought up, I talked to David this morning on that, in order to put some sod down, we're gonna have to get irrigation, so he's gonna, if he's still on, he talked about cutting into the sidewalk to get the, uh, water line and that, but that's being worked on. And then it was brought up about the, uh, the old alleyway that was left behind it, and I thought, and I was talking to the mayor when he's inside checking, both thought that they had taken that out because of dirt, but they just put dirt on top of it. However, in-house, I talked to David, in-house, we can remove that.
Do we own that alleyway?
Yeah, I think we own the alleyway up to our parking lot.
Wait, where would this property enter, because it's the Wild Building?
The Wild Building. There was an old road, that was not much of a road left, but the, the base of it's still there, and it's, it's only got a quarter inch of dirt on it, so you can't really put grass over top of it. And also, they decided the building that was against it, which doesn't look too good, um, Rick Reed, Rick Whalen, and David got together and they thought the best thing to do was to paint it, it had to be spray painted, and actually, David, um, was off last week, he and his wife have a new little baby, in fact, he's home taking care of the weak old baby at home.
Congratulations.
He had a, a son, um, but he's gonna get with the owner, make sure that's all right, um.
Has that owner applied for a CRA grant?
No.
He has applications, but he's, he doesn't know what to do with them just yet, he was waiting to see what the results were of the tear down.
Okay.
So I don't know if he was gonna apply for CRA grant to paint it, are you saying the city's gonna paint it?
Well, if, if he isn't gonna do anything, I think that we.
I, I think he wants to do something, because it looks all hodgepodge right now.
Yeah, we need to do something with it.
Yeah, so that, that was my point, is that the city, you know, the city can go and paint that wall, obviously, we're not gonna paint the whole building, but.
No.
We can paint that wall, that's just not gonna do that much good, you know, the whole building needs to be painted, and there's some other things that needs to be done to the building too, so I had encouraged him several times to go and get applications and apply for CRA grants, because he does have several businesses there, he'd probably get a substantial amount of money to do a lot of work for the outside of the building, so.
But you haven't spoken to him?
No, I spoke to Dave this morning, and no one last week spoke to him, so Dave is gonna meet with him this week, hopefully tomorrow.
So, anyone that knows him, by all means, prod him to get it done.
Yeah. May go over there myself.
Okay.
In, in the last thing, um, Kim's gonna be leaving the city.
Uh-oh.
Um, her last day is gonna be April twenty-third, she's leaving to pursue some other interests.
Kim, excited to see you go, we appreciate all your help over the time that you've been here.
You didn't like that box I gave you, is that what triggered this?
That was it. Thank you, thank you all very much, too, I appreciate everything that you've done for me.
Wish y'all the best, Kim.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Throw you out your cell, Rover.
Okay, keep in touch.
In the past two days, a lot of people have been following, so all right.
Anything else, Mark?
That's it.
Okay, that concludes our, our agenda, is there anything else for the good of the city?
Yeah, I, I have, I have something to say.
Just, ma'am?
Please, somebody tell, um, Randy LaBelle or whoever is code enforcement, because at the last meeting, we talked about all those tires in the cemetery over Williamsburg Court, thank God they're gone. So thank you, it, it, it worked, he did it, and they're gone, and I really do appreciate it, thanks so much for that.
Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, the adjourn place.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.